Just the twin in the back. He's downtown.
They did dress alike.
Have to check it out.
Okay, alright, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. We've got the budget, Public Works, or who are you?
You want to finish up on Eric's stuff?
Oh yes, we have to finish up on Eric's. Where was I?
Are you ready?
Sure.
Alright, I'm gonna go through.
Parks and Rec.
Yep.
Parks and Rec.
Okay.
It's just a mission statement for Parks and Rec to enhance lives of residents and visitors to our community by providing high-quality park and recreation facilities, fun and safe recreation programs, and environmentally sound services. So that's what we do in Parks and Rec. There are six budget codes under Park and Rec. The first four, sixteen oh one through sixteen oh four, park maintenance, forestry, swimming pool, and recreation. And then the last two are the enterprise funds, the Flano's Golf Course and the Recplex. A few of the issues and items under Parks and Rec that we face annually, I guess, is seasonal staffing. As we go through the presentation, I'll describe how many seasonal employees we have in the parks facilities. Those are the main driver of our operations during the season. And it's not just a summer season, it's a March to October later season. So it's something where these aren't just college students, a lot of them, this is their jobs, and we depend quite a bit on them. So trying to retain staffing, not have that high turnover, and also competing with other area businesses and wages and all that. So aging facilities and amenities, we do have great park system, but some of our facilities are older and do require maintenance, replacement, whether that is through age or through damage. Unfortunately, there is some damage to our park facilities. Trying to maintain attractive usable facilities and sites. A lot of visitors and families, individuals in the community, they identify with parks quite a bit and kind of represents a community. And then on the enterprise operations, I guess some of the issues are use of facilities, trends in use, especially the rec leagues and competition for individuals' times, family time. It's something we'll talk about, especially as we get to the Recplex. So just a summary of what the parks and forestry are. We have ten to thirteen seasonal employees annually in the park system, two to four in forestry. We maintain thirteen park sites, approximately two hundred acres of parks. Playgrounds, shelters, arboretum, restrooms, right-of-way, scattered lots. We do mowing along some of the right-of-way and scattered lots as well. Over eleven thousand right-of-way trees, twenty-five hundred park trees that are maintained through the forestry department. So equipment is vital to the operation and efficiency. As we go through the CIP, that is the primary driver in our CIP, is mowers, trucks, equipment such as that. Parks budget, there are some annual changes based on project needs. Try and keep that fairly steady, but year to year, there's different projects that come up, whether it's improvements to a certain shelter or a facility within our park system that it does go up and down a little bit. On the forestry side, there is a plan to reduce this budget as we catch up to EAB. We're pretty close to the end of Emerald Ash Bore, the ash tree impact in the right-of-way in parks, but we're trying to catch up on some of the other issues that we deferred in dealing with that. Specifically stumps and some of the other trees that have been impacted, but I think this is the last high year in our contractual budget for the forestry. So just a brief tree update. As some of you remember, in 2014, we had nearly a thousand ash trees that we had to deal with. Emerald Ash Bore was in, is in the community, was at that time, had been identified. So the plan at that time was to remove a vast majority of all ash trees from the right-of-way in parks. If they're not removed, they do have to be treated for the life of the tree, so it's something that we didn't want to maintain that high ongoing cost. There are some trees that individuals chose to treat. The city put out a contract in the right-of-way that are paid by the adjacent property owner. Those will continue to be treated as they're paid by that property owner, and there are a few within the park system, especially Crepo being an arboretum, wanting to maintain a couple of those. So stump removal was the main driver as we've gotten through the ash trees. As I mentioned, all the ash trees in Parks and Right-of-Way have been addressed, either removed or on our treatment schedule. So now we're left with a lot of stumps. At one time, we had over six hundred stumps. We removed three hundred and fifty last year in the calendar year. We're planning on removing three hundred and thirty-six that are remaining for 2018. As we get through this process of dealing with ash trees, we'll have a full process of topping or trimming the trees, removing trees, removing stumps all at once. Dealing with ash, we just wanted to get rid of the hazard right away, so we didn't do the stumps at that time. But once we move forward, we'll be removing the tree and dealing with the tree as a whole and not having this stump issue outstanding. But hopefully after this calendar year, 2018, we'll be caught up with stumps and be able to deal with those on a regular basis and not have those sitting out there. Contractual costs, as you see in FY seventeen, we had a hundred and twenty thousand. FY eighteen, eighty thousand. FY nineteen, this upcoming fiscal year, seventy thousand to deal with contractual tree removals, stump removals, and then FY twenty going back down to thirty-five thousand. And those, again, dealing with whether it's ash trees or other hazard trees, some of those big trees that are a little more difficult to deal with, require more equipment or more time than we have, and also dealing, trying to get all the stumps removed, trying to deal with some of those deferred tree issues, whether it's silver maple or other trees that have had issues. But getting through that this year and then going back to a more steady cost FY twenty and beyond. So projects in 2017, just to recap, we treated fifty-four right-of-way and park ash trees. Majority of those were homeowner-paid. We completed two right-of-way and park tree plantings. A hundred and forty-five trees were planted. Did just get, we apply annually for grants to plant trees and did just get award notice from Lion Energy Trees Forever that we got a branching out grant again this year for about forty-five hundred dollars for tree planting. So they just made that award end of last week. So that helps us replace a lot of these trees that are being removed. In calendar year 2017, a hundred and eighty-nine ash trees were removed in the right-of-way in parks, and thirty-four ash trees were removed, so two hundred and fourteen total trees. And as mentioned, a hundred and forty-five were planted, so there was a loss there. One thing we've maintained over the years, but the system has been updated, we have a treekeeper system that maintains a record of all our trees in the right-of-way and in the park grounds. Keeps the species, the condition, age, the width of the tree, planting sites, and that the treekeeper is the program has been updated. They did some updates. So we now have that out on the city website. That's the link there, BurlingtonIA.TreKeeperSoftware.com. So anyone in public can go out and see what any tree in the right-of-way is or what is in the park, see its species or type, condition, size. So that's a handy tool if you want to know what tree you have outside your front door or down the road. That's a system that's maintained. Some park improvement projects. In the last year, we added eighteen new alternate holes for disc golf. The Des Moines County Disc Golf Club helped raise some funds, got some donations to get new baskets in the park. We added some park holes behind James Madison School. So that was a good addition, very heavily used. Trimmed eight hundred trees in the park system. Perkins Park Indoor Shelter had some improvements, some windows, some painting. That continues to be heavily used. Some of the future projects, Deedwin and Gladys White Park Improvements, that's our major park project in our calendar year 2018. In the upper right-hand corner there, it kind of shows the planned layout of that park. We do have a bid out, or contract out, on the shelter, first in line for the contractor this spring. That'll be installed on the asphalt area, so that'll be done right away this spring. The open playfield, we're still working with Public Works and Engineering. As mentioned before, there's quite a few sewers that dissect that property, so how to deal with that. Addressing the sewer issues and future sewer issues there while also having that playfield and then adding in the new playground equipment as well. So we're hoping to complete that by the end of the calendar year, have the shelter done right away in the spring, and then have that as a park that we've wholly addressed and able to not move on from, but hopefully it's there for quite a while and we don't have to come back and do little items here and there over the next few years. Denkworth Park Playground, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in the CIP. This was one of the sketches that we looked at last year when we were doing our CIP planning and trying to plan for that playground. We had quite a bit more in the budget last year. Vast majority of that was from outside fundraising. It's still something we have as a goal. We have funding in this year's CIP, but just with staff time, trying to find that right driver of the project, whether it's community committee or something to try and continue to move that forward, but I'll talk about that a little bit more later. The Denkworth Park Pool Bubble, that's kind of dependent on grant funds. I know the swim club has gone to the CAT Committee, the Grant Committee a couple of times, still working through that process. Continued disc golf course updates and signage. Our Crepo Park Arboretum, replanting, looking at downtown, some of the trees were removed in the two-hundred block of Jefferson with that parking improvement, and we've tried to come up with a better plan for downtown tree planting, more cohesive trees in that area, stump removal, and then continue to replace amenities. And also working to establish a park and rec endowment fund as we have shrinking budgets and looking long-term future, probably not next five, ten, fifteen years, but twenty, thirty, forty years down the road, is there a sustainable way to fund some of the projects in the parks? And that's something we'd like to get started as that endowment fund. So swimming pool, recreation activities, again, seasonal employees are the big driver for that. Fifteen to twenty seasonal employees at the pool, four to six at summer camp. These are pool issues, weather and school year-dependent. We had a very, I guess, nice August last year, although it wasn't hot. Is good temperature, probably better for golfing than the pool. Our pool numbers were way down because it wasn't very warm, but that's how, that affects our pool quite a bit is the temperature, rain. So we had a pretty good June and July, but a very low August. One thing, again, we signed the lease for the pool for all year operation, depending on the bubble, getting the bubble on the pool. So that's kind of some unknowns, impact on capital items, use operations. They're going to be running swim lessons going forward. We're still just covering costs during the summer months, and they're covering it during those off-summer months, but what is that impact on the pool? We've done some improvements the last few years, a pool liner, the roof, some pump improvements and ongoing maintenance, but that future pool bubble, kind of what is that impact on our current facility? They're looking to replace the pool deck. That was an item that was in the CIP at a hundred thousand. A few years from now, that was taken out based on them putting in the bubble and doing all the new deck work. I guess if they do not, for some reason, get this grant or don't move forward, that'll be something we'll have to have a future discussion on. And then the life of the pool. We put in the liner, had a fifteen-year timeframe. The bubble's expected around fifteen years. This is a forty-year-old pool facility. Kind of where are we at at the end of that fifteen years? Is it trying to continue it on on an annual basis, or is there some plan at that point? Don't have to discuss it now, but down the road, that is a discussion. What is the plan? Is it going to try and continue it on, replace it, close it at once its useful life is done? So that's kind of a future discussion, but something that'll have to happen before that fifteen years is up.
Yeah, did I understand you right that the deck got clipped?
Deck isn't in our budget, it's part of the South Swim Club's project.
That's still moving.
They're still moving forward, but if for some reason, they haven't been awarded the grant through the CAT Committee, but if for some whatever reason they don't move forward, then we're gonna have to address it at some point.
Can you remind me, wasn't there a contribution on the city's part in order to meet some of the requirements for that grant?
Yeah, the pump that's in FY seventeen is part of that, that's twenty-five thousand. We're gonna be doing that. And then we're, they have an annual monthly lease payment. It's not a reimbursement of that payment, but based on that, we're contributing funds toward them over the next three years.
Okay.
And that contribution won't exceed what we're getting back from that lease payment.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, we took out a hundred thousand out of the CIP from that deck, and we're giving, I don't remember the exact total, but roughly fifty thousand plus that pump back over the next three years.
Over the three, three years.
Programs, Perkins Park Summer Camp, this has been ongoing for quite a while. Tendons and revenue has been up the last couple of years. We've done a lot more promotion of the camp. Heard a lot of good experiences from the kids and families. Feel it's a high-quality experience, and we have some great staff there. So as you see, the revenues from FY fifteen to seventeen, it's gone eighteen thousand, twenty-two thousand, and twenty-seven thousand. That's without any, I don't think there's been any major increases in costs there. We are looking to increase this coming season, but have had, we're at a point where it's at full capacity for the camp. We have to turn kids away, but that's been a very good program the last few years. Increased the cost for the seasonal staffing, but revenue has increased accordingly as Some other programs through the Park and Rec, City Day in the Park, we're quite a bit on, archery, youth tennis, after-school programs, and then the Great River Bridge Race. This has been ongoing for twenty-some years.
Why was Jim laughing after you said that? That's shameful. This guy's a hundred years old and he's whooping you on that race. I'm hoping that you redeem yourself this year.
We'll see.
Sorry, let's continue.
One thing with this, it's not really been a focus of the parks. It's been a race we put on, but there's kind of been some different focuses of it. We're looking at kind of re-braining that, having more awareness and focus on the parks, trying to raise funds for park amenities and promote the endowment fund.
Through the race?
Through the race a little bit more. We're looking at some different, maybe different things with the race this year, different after-race programs as well. So we'll have some more to roll out on that as we move forward with it, but we are going to really try and raise awareness and promote the parks through this race and then promote our facilities. Our parks staff puts us on quite a bit, and it's kind of not had that real big focus, but that's kind of being the focus with the funds and with staff going forward as the park system, so.
Where's it start at?
Starts down in front of Big, the Drake.
I think the entire council should run it this year. I think we should have a competition, and everybody in the council should run the bridge run.
There may be some other options for non-running this year we'll go over as we get closer to. Starts in front of the Drake, it's a five K and a ten K, goes up Snake Alley through the neighborhood and then across the bridge into Delphine Fort and back.
Does it, does it go through any of the parks in the city of Burlington?
It doesn't specifically. North Hill Park's probably the closest.
Or technically, you've got the North Riverfront Park.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably his closest.
Yep.
I think the chamber should do, everybody from the chamber should do the bridge run. Jason, we'll talk about it.
As long as we've got an electric scooter option, then I'm fine. I got my skateboard.
So a little more detail on the swimming pool. Tendons was down over last year, which was one of our highest years in recent history, but still higher than the three previous years to that. So still was very well-attended. As you see on the upper right there, the red is June, the green is July, and the purple's August, with the blue on the far right is the total attendance. You can see the tendons in August dropped off pretty significantly, a lot of that was due to weather. We do see some reduction just over the summer, less attendance to it, but that was quite a bit of drop-off there in August, primarily based on weather. Revenue was up over the three years previous, other than 2016, so we're hoping to continue that, see what impact I guess this, the bubble has, and if that can continue to drive some attendance to the pool. So as far as operation budgets for these four items, park maintenance, five hundred and sixty thousand, forestry, three hundred and sixty-five, swimming pool, ninety-five, and recreation, eighty-seven thousand. You can see FY seventeen budget and actual. We're below budget on the first three, we're above budget in recreation. Part of that was due to more staff time, which also increased our revenue higher than projected as well. But a lot of those costs are seasonal labor, the wages there, trying to increase those, keep those in line with what the community, they can make at McDonald's or Walmart. These are employees, again, that are on staff from March through September, October. These aren't just, we do have some college-age kids that come during the three months in the summer, but to maintain our parks, it's a full-time position for someone for nine months out of the year and trying to get quality people. We did have to use temp services last year for mowers in our parks, which is a higher cost than just our normal wage and a little less reliable. We're trying to hopefully be able to fill our staff as we normally do and not have to use that service.
Have we, have we re-looked back into back of the day when delinquents would get in trouble, juveniles, and they were under the age? We'd put them to work in our parks, cutting grass and that sort of thing. I just think that with, I think that would be a great assist for the police department and also give some kids some things to do and also take some pressure off of our parks department. I think we need to give some of these kids that don't seem to want to get right, right-of-way, something to do. I just think that needs to be something let's look back into. It was fine back in the day, and it helped a lot of kids. I think they need to go back to work, and I think that would help out a lot of areas out there.
Those are, there are some things that could be a problem, like you'd have to have somebody to supervise them. There's going to be some type of liability risk associated with it. Also, I don't know, you can force people to do something unless they've been assigned community service through a court system, you know? And then also, if you get into that kind of technique, the consistency of quality of work is probably going to be an issue sometimes.
I'm not saying about relying on them. I'm talking about putting wayward kids to work. And yeah, I mean, I know there's liabilities, but there were liabilities back in the day. I just think that, I'm not saying that that's something that we need to do right now, I'm just saying I think that's something that we brought up one time before, and there was no reason that I got, that I received that says that we can't do it. And other communities are still doing it, aren't they?
Can't put, we have to have people who are eighteen on the mowers, so.
Eighteen-year-olds acting up, though.
That's, so we do have a limitation on age for what we can use.
But there's other things they can do, Jim, that don't involve mowers, right?
Most of what you're, most of what we're filling positions and having trouble filling are the people who are lawn mowing or in forestry. They're all, they're all positions that, or for Don's area, you're looking for someone with a license in most places, so I suppose you could probably do something. So the areas that we're having the primary difficulty are ones that the temp labors on that part don't, from that perspective, don't work, although there are things that we have used them on to do projects for. But these are things that we're having just ongoing issues for our permanent staffing. And.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that as the cure for that, that just when it came up, it just came back to my mind again, and I just think it's something that.
But I like the way you're thinking. They could help clean up trash, clean up graffiti. I mean, there's things they could do.
They could do something.
Help beautify our park vicinity.
But that's more like a community service program than it would be an employment program, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not talking about employment. I don't want them getting paid, but let's keep it moving. I just, it just popped into the mind, so I keep forgetting things, so that's one of the ones that I kind of let, by the way, say.
So any other questions on, these are the kind of general fund operations, the four general fund operations, and go into the enterprise fund operations then. Golf course being first.
Eric, I do have one quick question for you. There was a forty-eight thousand dollar drop from seventeen to eighteen on the forestry operations. What's that contribute, is that the drop in the Emerald Ash Bore fund or else?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, and FY seventeen, we had a hundred and fifty-three thousand spent in technical services, which was contractual removal of ash trees.
Okay.
And FY eighteen, we budgeted eighty thousand, so.
Okay, alright.
That'll go down again, seventy thousand this year and thirty-five thousand the following year, so.
Okay, thanks.
So forestry, you've probably seen a trend over the last four or five years of reduction as we've been able to get through the ash trees, and next year will be, not FY nineteen, but FY twenty will be kind of the more stable going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So the golf course, some of the trends, golf outings have been steady. Play is, again, weather-dependent, affects all of our parks. Demographics of the players really represents the community. We do have, I guess, from our pass holder standpoint, vast majority of our pass holders are seniors, which I guess just Burlington being an older community, we have gone to the year replacement on carts. We previously worked four years in replacing batteries every four years. As you see in FY seventeen, we were budgeted at a thousand-dollar loss. The actual revenue was about thirty thousand dollars to the good outside of capital costs, that would have brought it down to twenty-five thousand or so. FY eighteen, budgeted six thousand-dollar loss. Hopefully that can come in similar to FY seventeen, but as you see there, that pump improvement was the major driver of that cost for capital. FY nineteen, we don't have any capital projects planned or proposed. Is budgeted at a seventeen thousand-dollar loss. Again, looking at trends, FY seventeen was a thousand dollars down, FY sixteen, fifteen were positive operationally, so we certainly try and meet that goal. Both in the Recplex and the golf course for expenditures budget-wise, we have, we budget our staffing, especially seasonal staffing, on what, a full year of how many hours we project they could be there. We do have rain, days of rain, slow times that they are sent home, but we don't want to budget where if we do have an optimal season, that we're running over on that seasonal staffing. So generally, we've been under on seasonal staffing, which has helped, but we still budget based on what we predict could happen there. In operations on the golf course, I think a couple of trends, we've seen a decline in some, some of the merchandise sales. Dick's Sporting Goods, a few years, has been here a few years. We see a lot more going there, which is great for the community in another sense of having that business here, but it does affect a little bit on some of that merchandise sales, but then we're purchasing less as well. Rounds played, fairly steady the last six years, anywhere between seventeen and twenty thousand for a high in 2012, so we're at eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty rounds played in FY, or in FY seventeen. Season passes, a hundred and eighteen last fiscal year, just up from 2016, but we had been trending a little higher the previous four years to that. Again, in FY seventeen, of those, a hundred and eighteen, sixty-three were seniors, twenty-three juniors, fourteen singles and sixteen couples. So seniors has been between forty-five and sixty-three, I think sixty-four was our high for seniors, so that's kind of the driver on the season passes. Quality of the course and player experience is critical to continued play for customers, so some of the higher expenses you see there are chemicals, grass, trying to maintain the course in a quality condition that people want to play. We had, year number of years ago, if something happens at the course, irrigation goes out or we get a fungus or something that really affects the condition of the course, your play's going to drop quite a bit, and that's going to affect revenue quite a bit. So we try and maintain a quality course. We're obviously not a PGA-level course, but we still want a quality course for our customers.
Keep away the fungus.
These are examined annually to remain competitive in the area. We do look at, Spirit Hollow's not completely competitive as far as what type of course or customer goes there, but we look at them. Schaefer in Fort Madison's probably the primary, I guess comparable, and we've always been competitive with them, whether it's a dollar or two more or less, and trying to stay within that range from them and a couple others in the area. And then trying to keep our rounds and pass holders steady is a goal at the golf course. Recplex, a little more discussion here, I think. Again, maintaining the grounds and amenities. We want a quality facility where teams coming from all over the region are coming to, and they want to come back because it is maintained in a high quality. That's something we hear about quite a bit is quality of the facility. We also hear people think there are issues, so that's something we, I know John out there takes great pride in, as Ted does at the golf course. Some of the issues, parking, concessions, restrooms. When the facility was built, obviously, it was built with hopes of expanding in mind as far as number of teams and leagues and everything, but we are still limited on our concessions in that main building, restrooms, and parking. Trying to make some improvements as we discussed, depending what happens with the indoor facility, but also just the parking on the west side of the facility, expanding the driveway there. There is a positive community impact. expanding the driveway there. Um, there is a positive community impact of the Recplex beyond just the budget at the Recplex, which we'll talk about a little bit more. Um, one of the main issues is league play. Reduction in number of teams over the last five years has, um, been somewhat significant, especially in the last year or so. Um, there is a competition of time, uh, for individuals and other facilities in the greater region to lesser extent that probably affects it more from a tournament standpoint than a league standpoint. Um, but there is a new facility in Fort Madison that some of the just recreational users from Keakuck Fort Madison might not come up anymore for volleyball or softball. Um, and then parent involvement in youth sports. Uh, talking to Kirk and John, uh, seeing less and less of the younger adults, uh, going to the leagues. But we're seeing them more out at the facility with their kids for, uh, tournaments and leagues. Um, so kids are involved more, but they're involved less in some of these leagues. Uh, so always competition for leisure time and then just fewer younger adult players, uh, whether that's population of our community or, uh, just interest in doing that. Um, that has an impact on the Recplex. So as you see, uh, balance from operation standpoint, uh, 22,000, um, deficit in FY 17, 65,000 in FY, or 22,000 budget in FY 17, actual is 65,000. Uh, FY 18 was adopted at 63,000 and FY 19's proposed at 131,000. Um, again, actual expenditures, uh, generally come in lower. We budget based on, uh, number of leagues and teams, how many, uh, we think we need for, to maintain the facility, whether it's concessions or front desk, or front gate or, uh, mowing. But, um, those have come in a little lower, but unfortunately our revenue's gone down as well. Uh, capital expenditures, uh, primarily mowers, uh, some field improvements and other improvements in the area. But that is a significant change over the last couple of years in, uh, what the operational balance is at the Recplex. And we'll kind of go over some of the league numbers as well that kind of show how that's being affected. So this is our league teams over the last, uh, 2013 to 2017. Um, slow pitch softball, volleyball, soccer, and then the total. Uh, we also have some flag football, some, uh, other baseball and, uh, fast pitch softball, some other leagues as well. But these are kind of the three primary ones. Um, soccer, as you see, has stayed fairly steady over the last, uh, four or five years, um, in that mid 140 range the last three years especially. Softball's gone down from 110, 111, uh, league teams in 2013, 2014 to 68 last year. And volleyball's gone from 65, 58 down to 35 last year. And again, part of that is just the recreation, general recreation play, um, from Fort Madison. They, there's a few teams that normally had signed up that haven't in the past, but also just not the, not the number of teams, not the number of players that are coming out to the Recplex. Uh, maybe they are more with their kids, but not on the individual basis. And talking to Kirk, just a rough estimate, uh, how much does each team that we don't have come out there, uh, result in a loss in revenue? So for each, uh, softball team, estimated a little over a thousand dollars in lost revenue per team. Uh, so we've gone from 110 down to 68. Um, so 40 teams, a thousand dollars a team, that'd be $40,000 in lost revenue. Uh, and how that was broken out, uh, 12 players on a team, 288, uh, from the gate, 300 for registration fee, 480 through concession. Uh, volleyball, smaller teams, a little less, uh, reduction per team, but 552, uh, estimated revenue per team. Um, so everyone that, less team that's signed up, we're losing approximately that amount. Um, so that has been a big driver in revenue at the Recplex. And then just, again, different way to look at it comparison sake. Uh, league teams last year, 68 slow pitch softball, 89 on a four-year average. Nine fast pitch softball. Uh, over the last four years, it's averaged 12. Uh, 35 volleyball, it's averaged 48. 144 in soccer. In the last four years, it's averaged 144. So again, that's been steady. Flag football's been steady. Uh, but we're down about 37 teams over the last four-year average and it's gone down, uh, each year. And admissions, concessions are two of the biggest, uh, reductions in revenue, uh, concessions especially. Um, even for, I guess, league teams, uh, see less of the social aspect of it. Uh, players are coming out, playing the games and leaving. Uh, don't see as many, uh, coming out and making an evening of it, staying, hanging out with friends, uh, maybe having a few drinks, uh, which drives concessions. Uh, again, competition for time. Do you want to come out and spend three or four hours on a night, uh, playing softball? Or do you want to come out, play your game and leave, which again affects, uh, concessions quite a bit. Uh, are looking at changing some of the league formats in 2018, uh, to try and attempt to increase some numbers. Um, extending some of the seasons. Uh, the men's season has seen decline in numbers, uh, just less men to play those, uh, leagues. But, uh, coed's been fairly decent, but extending some of the seasons, maybe having them longer, uh, which will get more in, uh, entry and concession fees. Uh, also looking at, had some, have some complaints that some of the leagues are too competitive. Uh, they just want to go out and have fun and some that they're not competitive enough. They're playing teams that they continually beat, like in volleyball. So trying to, uh, maybe create a couple different, uh, leagues of a rec league versus competitive league in volleyball and doing different things to get people to continue to come out. And, uh, that's something that Kirk especially looks at every year is how do we, uh, meet the needs of our users and customers and, uh, try and, uh, hear that feedback and make changes.
Water's too hot. No, it's too cold. It's too perfect.
So, attendance, uh, as you see over the last four years, uh, high of 90,000 in total attendance at the Recplex in, uh, 2014, 71,000 last year. Uh, tournament wise, uh, it's kind of a, a positive side of things. We've been fairly steady. It's gone down a little bit over the last, uh, few years, but, uh, fairly steady overall in the last five years of number of tournament, uh, teams. Uh, in 2017, we had 32 total tournaments, 806, uh, total teams. 591 of these teams were from one hour away or more. Um, just plugging in those numbers to how they estimate, um, local spending. Um, and it's just a strict formula. So I don't know if it, uh, it's not always accurate, but, uh, takes into account how many hotel rooms, uh, how much food, shopping, gas on a, um, per team basis, based on how far away they are. Um, but that estimate was over $4 million in direct local spending through, uh, hotel rooms, uh, restaurants, uh, shopping, gas, based on that formula. Um, so it is a, a greater impact than just at the Recplex. And that's the impact on the community, uh, that these teams coming into our community For 2018, uh, we have one of the, I guess, fullest schedules, tournament schedules that we've had in quite a while. Uh, kind of hard to see there, but the bold tournaments are, bold, uh, tournaments showing up there, new tournaments that we didn't have last year. Um, so we do have some, uh, more ESA tournaments and some more, uh, newer tournaments, uh, that, uh, feel pretty excited about that. Might draw in some more teams, new teams, uh, that haven't been here before. And, um, so we feel that, uh, tournament wise, that we should, uh, hopefully be up over last year, uh, based on this. Any questions on Recplex before I go on to CIP? There's a lot to, um, look at.
As far as expenditures go for 19, if, uh, if the chamber's able to follow through or the, uh, partnership's able to follow through with the expansion out there, what, what effect do we expect to see on that?
Well, it's kind of a discussion on, uh, how operations are handled. Right now, they're, I believe they're looking at just independent operations, but what are some resources we could share or combine there? Um, don't have anything projected to increase at this time, um, based on, I guess, just those initial, that they're operating their facility, we're operating our facility. But, um, there may be some cost share, some opportunities for, uh, savings or growth in some of our, uh, tournaments or facilities and as well benefit to them as well. So, but the, the budget's just based on our individual operation. Yep.
Okay.
FY 19 CIP, uh, we've had an annual, uh, trail maintenance, uh, $5,000 a year, uh, a local option sales tax projected for the next five years. Um, we do have an increased number of trails. Trail along, around the Recplex from Roosevelt, uh, to, uh, the Recplex is a older, uh, asphalt trail. It had some seal cracking last year, but, um, maintaining some of that and the Flint River Trails, that continues to be developed. Uh, equipment wise, uh, we have Parks mower and a forestry brush chipper. Uh, I know the brush chipper is, uh, very critical to the operation of the forestry department. Without that, they aren't able to operate. You said, I, that is one of the more critical items. I know it's a higher price item, but, uh, replacing one that they've had a lot of work on, a lot of maintenance on and, uh, very critical to them. Uh, no equipment from golf course or Recplex in FY 19. Improvement projects, uh, with Dankworth Playground, 150,000. Uh, that's all from Starker funds and then outside fundraising. Again, that's something we're looking at. We had in last year's budget and didn't, uh, complete anything there, uh, just based on, I think, a lot of it's based on staff time and trying to find, uh, a driver for that project, whether, uh, we've had some discussions of getting a committee together or something to, uh, try and push that forward and, uh, do some fundraising for. That is our premier park in Burlington, active park in Burlington. Um, Crepo is kind of the passive, uh, more natural walking park. But Dankworth has all of our, uh, disc golf, uh, T-ball, swimming pool, uh, and we want a playground that is an attraction in that area. And that was kind of the goal, uh, last year was, uh, developing a playground that is an attraction, not just for Burlington, but for the region. When people visit Burlington or in the area, they know about that playground. And so that's something we're, uh, still trying to work through how to progress that forward, um, whether it's through a committee or some other, uh, individual driver of that project. But based on staff time, we just didn't have that last year and hoping to try and move that forward this year. Uh, Crepo and Dankworth tennis court resurfacing. We did have Crepo in the budget, um, I think it's FY 21. Uh, we moved those both forward. Um, not looking at any, uh, city funds other than Starker funds, uh, working with the school district on, uh, contribution there. They're looking to contribute towards that, um, make that, uh, part of their, their, uh, tennis courts are in poor repair and, um, having some partnership there of contribution from the school district, uh, using Starker funds and grant funds to, uh, accomplish resurfacing of both of those facilities. Um, and getting that, uh, those courts in a, a quality condition where tournaments and meets and practices can be held there and add very little to, very little cost to the city, other than the Starker funds, which is a small portion of that. A couple trails, Mason Road Trail, uh, that's been on the budget for the last four years, I believe. It was awarded, uh, funds, uh, about four years ago, three, four years ago. And that's a connection from Edstone School to the east on the north side of Mason Road, uh, to Sunrise West area. Um, funds, uh, through the state are available currently. Um, we have our funds local match budgeted for FY 19. So we hopefully anticipate that project happening, uh, after the July 1, uh, to complete that. It would be a 10-foot section of trail, again, from Edstone back to Sunrise West. West Avenue Trail, we did apply for that grant. Um, that would connect same section of trail, but from, uh, behind fairway on the south side of West Avenue, along Notre Dame's fence that they recently moved across West Avenue with improved crossing at West Avenue, um, between US Bank and Two Rivers Bank, that area. Uh, did, we haven't, uh, we have applied and they, but they won't announce until April. So if the funds, if we aren't awarded funds, that project wouldn't happen until we are awarded funds on that. Um, as you see, it's, uh, 232,000 in grant funding, 35,000 in local funding. So without grant funding, uh, we don't have the resources to do that project. And we're trying to apply again next year. Um, but again, Mason Road Trail, those funds are secured. And then the Recplex, uh, West driveway extension, that's the parking area on the west side of the Recplex. Getting that drive, uh, completed. So if we have rainy weather, it's not a, a mud met, muddy mess over there. Uh, at least having the driveway, uh, paved similar to what the bees have, uh, for their driveway. And, uh, golf course again has no projects in FY 19. Future items, uh, primarily, uh, equipment for Parks Golf Course Recplex. Uh, the FY 20 items, um, the Recplex two items there were moved back, uh, from FY 19, infield groomer and a gator utility. Uh, the mower and carts at the golf course are more programmed items for FY 20. Uh, again, trucks, uh, parked trucks and mower, uh, critical to the operation. I, mowers are items that if they break down, I, that's time that we're not able to, uh, maintain our facilities and also cost, uh, quite a bit in maintenance costs. So trying to keep up on our equipment there is pretty critical. And then, uh, future items, improvements. Um, do have some funds for, uh, continuation of Dankworth Playground in FY 20. Uh, Recplex Playground net, um, we were looking at doing a roof and, uh, surface, uh, at the Recplex Playground, but took that out and replaced it with a, a net, uh, just, uh, reduce cost and, uh, try and keep that a safe area there. Um, some walkway lighting, uh, upgrade to LED. Uh, the Flint River Trail along Bluff Road, hopefully that would be the last section of, uh, Flint River Trail connecting, uh, from Case to downtown. Uh, Dankworth restroom and pool diamond boards, uh, those are asterisk there. Uh, they're in the CIP. There's no, uh, funds other than Starker funds or outside funds. So no sales tax or hotel motel would go to those two items at this time. And then no improvement projects in FY 22 and 23. Um, so as you see those four at the bottom there, those are, uh, improvement projects, but, uh, no, again, no sales tax or hotel funds. Those are all Starker or outside entity funds that we're looking to accomplish.
Right on.
Uh, again, the Crepo and Dankworth tennis courts would not occur without participation from the school district. They're a big driver of that as well. Um, so trying to get creative and find outside funds and utilizing Starker to move some of these projects forward.
Creativity's good.
So removed items, these are items that were in the, uh, CIP last year, um, removed just through budget cuts or, um, prioritization. Uh, we are looking to, uh, purchase one less golf cart in FY 18, three less in FY 21. Um, again, the Recplex Playground, uh, reprioritizing that. Um, and then some other, uh, park amenity projects, uh, pool deck replacement repair that, uh, again, was in FY 22. Um, but that's contingent on, or that's being replaced by the Swim Club with the, uh, dome project. If that, again, doesn't occur, then that'll have to be readdressed at some point. So, um, and then some other items that were moved out of the budget, uh, that were desired, forestry bucket truck, chipper and, uh, golf course utility vehicle. Uh, so we did remove quite a few items, move items around based on limited budget and try and prioritize that every year based on what funds are available. So that's kind of a quick summary of the Parks budget. Any other questions on that?
Counsel?
I just had a, a question, Eric, on, say, a consumer has to fix their, their ash tree, treat it for life. What's that approximate cost of that? I'm just curious.
Um, God.
Maybe it varies.
Yeah, it, it varies based on the dimension of the tree. And I, I don't remember if it's, uh, trying to think back, if it's $6 a, a inch, based on how wide the tree is.
It's pretty flashy there.
So, it, a few hundred dollars every, uh, every three years is the minimum. Ash be treated for the life of the tree.
I don't think we've got the saws out, huh?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it, it's an annual, you have to do it regularly. If you stop, then it's going to get infected.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Hey Eric, on some of the playground stuff, um, how much have we reached out to some of the civic organizations locally to find out if there's any matching funding available? I know I'm a Rotarian and one of the projects that Rotary's done a lot in our community is, is help fund or, or put in some of these playgrounds. Have, have we reached out to them to find out?
We presented at Rotary and Lions just on some of the projects. Haven't gotten to the point of, uh, asking for funds. Um, I think that's something we'll do this spring and summer is, uh, try to ask for funds.
Some of these projects, when are, um, when are they going to start taking place?
White Park will probably be in the fall, or late summer, fall, uh, based on when the sewer works done. Uh, I wouldn't anticipate Dankworth until next spring at the earliest.
Okay. And when did you think you, we were going to put together the ask for some assistance with that? This spring?
This spring, summer, go to some of the additional committees.
And I'm just asking because I know I sit on the, on the Rotary Board and one of the, the issues that we get sometimes is people will come to us and ask for funding for some of these playgrounds. The problem is, is there's a process that we have to go through in order to be able to get it. And if the project even breaks ground one, one day before that grant's awarded, then, then the grant won't be issued. So-
Alright. Thank you.
Um, I had a question about, uh, it says items not funded or moved. Uh, the forestry chipper, chipper is different from the brush chipper?
Yeah, we have two. This is a smaller one. We have-
I just wanted to-
Two crews that operate and this is a smaller one.
Okay. Okay.
You guys grooving? Any other questions? Thanks Eric. Okay, we're satisfied, Jim?
So, I think we're probably ready for Nick, as.
Somebody need a drink?
Just as a reminder, with one of the things that Eric had in there, this doesn't count as an interruption, because his presentation is done. The Recplex, as he talked about, the deficits in there, we were funding that 35,000 to 40,000 a year for several years. This current budget year, we have 75,000 allocated to go from hotel motel tax to cover the operating deficit, and in the proposed FY19 budget, it's 110,000. Now, we may not need that much, but if you look at what's budgeted, that's a $130,000 deficit, it could be larger.
For FY?
19.
19.
And how we fund that is out of hotel motel tax. As, one of the things that impacted the ability to fund capital equipment purchases or projects out of hotel motel tax, not just is it that hotel motel tax is $200,000 lower than it was two years ago, but out of the balance that's in there, we're dedicating an additional 70,000 towards operations of the Recplex that we weren't previously. So it's having a significant impact on, we don't have an awful lot of projects, as Eric talked about, I think we have three items that are funded out of hotel motel tax outside of our base items for this next year.
Outside of what the partnership's working on, what can we do in order to be able to improve those numbers? I mean, other than.
You know, one of the things that Eric has talked about is, would there be some value to going out and doing a study on, in terms of what's the market look like for what should be being done? We haven't had that occur in, in terms of are we addressing what the market says we should be doing there? I know that's been brought up with the indoor committee, I don't know if there'll be any movement to try to look at, at that as, as time moves on, but I think they have some of those similar concerns, they've done a market study for their facility, but it's not looking at our, our needs. But there may be some, I don't know, some mutual benefit to looking at from, from the perspective of what's, what can be done between the two different, what we're doing and what they're doing, to make sure that we have the right appropriate mix and locations and, and facilities to make, to meet the, the needs of what will the market bear at this point moving forward.
Sure, I mean, we're not going to close it, so we might as well figure out what we need to do to improve it.
Yeah, it's still very valuable.
Absolutely.
And so even regardless of, you had 110,000 that is going into it, if you look at what is, comes out of it for revenue from hotel motel tax and increased local option sales tax, it's still a major boon to our community beside, I mean, and that's just from a revenue standpoint, besides the impact it has on being able to make sure that we have businesses in town that can be.
Point guard.
Can be viable.
What's this, what's this study running?
You spent, when you did the study a few years ago, it was 20,000. A combined study, again, that used some of those numbers as a base, may be able to be done cheaper.
Is that something we could probably do in-house using some of the information already collected through their study? I mean, my guess is, is the market's.
I would say from what they did, I don't think that you would get what they're looking at. What they looked at, you wouldn't use to refresh our numbers. Because they were looking specifically at an indoor facility and what the potential impact, taking a look at what markets are in other communities and.
And it's a different timeframe of year, too.
Yep, yeah, winter sports.
Bottom line is though, even on that study, that 20,000, just hearing that figure just makes me cringe, but Mr. Anker's right, you know, we're not selling, it's not going anywhere, so it would be nice to know some direction going forward on that, on that outdoor one, if we're doing it right.
I mean, even a, even a 10% improvement based off of what a study tells.
Yeah, because when I hear the, the numbers, that the impact on the community is over $4 million in gas, hotel, food, lodging, I mean, that's, that's tremendous, we need to keep tapping into that.
And it may be something that maybe could be brought up with the indoor committee, that there might be some value in trying to partner between the two entities for doing a, a refresh of what do we look like as a community now for this?
Well, and if we're going to start making major improvements out there with the idea of adding a new indoor facility, that might be the thing, that you always start to review, what else can we do in order to make sure that the year, next year and every year thereafter is, is we're seeing improvement. Even if it breaks even, that's an improvement as to where we are today, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't be complaining about that, my friend. I wouldn't complain about anything that we had breaking even.
No, you got 10 more tournaments next year. Part of, part of the difficulty too is, and we have these weekend tournaments that are, I mean, it's packed out there, but as you see, the league, the day-to-day league teams, which is our local individuals, how do we boost that? And getting, drawing more teams in, more tournaments in is one thing, but then balancing that with the leagues, and every Monday through Friday, or how do we balance that?
Some of that's just going to be natural, because Fort Madison just built a comparable facility, so it operates as a substitute good for all those teams that came from Kew and Fort Madison. For years, up until just recently, we sponsored a team and played out there, so I know a lot of those teams did come from, from south of Burlington, and those are some things that, I mean, we may never get any of those back, but maybe if we can use this study to sweeten the pot or come up with different ideas to improve our facility, then we might be able to get some of those teams back.
Yeah, the other thing is though, Fort Madison spent dollars promoting their event. Once they opened the facility, they, they ran advertising, hey, look, you can play softball or do whatever you want to here. I, I don't know what we do to promote the event within the community to make it a top of mind thing. I used to be there, in fact, we were one of the oldest teams that won a championship to you, thank you.
Literally.
Four, three out of five years, we were champs. Anyway, yeah, I don't know what we spend to promote that, you know, I don't see anything going on there that, you know, whether it's a Hawkeye Haps ad or, or something, or do we have anything going on there, I haven't seen it.
The Recplex does quite a bit, I know with their social media, just, they do quite a bit on there to promote different things. I get emails every week.
Yeah, but if you're not on their page, you're not going to get them.
We do stuff on the radio and the newspaper.
Okay, I haven't seen it, that's why I was just asking.
541, we have 6,000 budgeted.
They don't have anything for them on Channel 9, so.
6,000 budget annually for advertising, so it is something we do.
Which isn't much, but I think with the new facility, you would need to advertise more because you're trying to introduce people to what you have to offer, maybe with the facility.
Because if you're, I guess, I guess then it's what type, because if you're advertising for tournaments versus if the tournament looks like you got 10 new tournaments next year, so then it's a different type of advertising when you're looking for those league players. I guess, because that's the weekday guys that are going to be here, the old codgers like me and, and young, young people that are playing, sponsored teams, church leagues, that kind of thing, so, I don't know, I, I haven't seen that much of it, so that's why I was asking.
But I think that's something that I'll bring up with the indoor Recplex Committee is, as, as we talk about whether there's some viability to look in at some market overviews to see if we can improve that.
Mr. Mack?
Nick.
Still the Don thing. Chair says, yeah.
I will. You know we would in a heartbeat, Antoine, he would watch him do it and he wouldn't tell me about it, so I love you, you're the best. So what do you think, Mr. Mack?
On a side note, forestry department, outstanding, I mean, I've had trees on the roadway and they've had to cut them down. I've never had to call about stumps, I've never had to, I've never had to do anything, you know, except when I wanted more trees, and then it's 20 bucks a piece, and I get two glorious trees for 20 bucks a piece.
I'll pass that along.
Yes, outstanding. I've never had to worry about a stump or anything on the roadways.
They do a pretty good job, they get behind every once in a while and some people get impatient with stuff.
They've been a duress for two years.
It's a good stab, and you got that right, you got that right.
That was still on the air, so it's going to be recorded.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait on soon, but then, yeah, we'll be ready though.
Let's hear a new thing before we move it, nice.
Come on, man, come on, darling. Okay.
Ready, Freddie?
I'm going to give my seat.
All right, what we got here is Public Works budget presentation. So this is, this is the org chart for the Public Works Department, is vehicle maintenance, property maintenance, sewers, streets, transit and engineering. We have five divisional managers, the vehicle maintenance manager, property maintenance manager, operations manager oversees streets and sewers, and as we get into that, I'll kind of discuss the formula, the staffing behind that. And then engineering managers, actually, I didn't correct that from last year, but it is the city engineer is over top of that, and then the transit manager is myself. So this is the, the total public works dollars that are spent, 7.742920, which is a, a budgeted decrease from the previous fiscal year. You can see the commodities is less and the contractual is down quite a bit, I think some of that's the auditorium, but the personnel costs are up some, and then the capital outlay is also up some. So our revenue sources, we have a fair amount of different revenue sources that comes into Public Works to fund it, as you can see, probably is pretty small on your little sheets, but road use tax is a big driver for Public Works, sewer fees is fairly substantial, general fund, and then some state and federal assistance for transit, but then we also have vehicle maintenance and property maintenance, they're an internal service fund, and they fund that, they bill out to the other departments for the use. And then expenditure wise, it gets even worse as far as number of things that it gets spent on, the number of things for a pie chart, so I will probably not really discuss much, much of that, but street maintenance is a big, big chunk of that. So these are all the budgets that are underneath the Public Works Department, I will not go through every single one of them, I will hit the, the ones on the left-hand side, the major operating ones, all the non-operating ones are, are facilities that are overseen by property maintenance. Staffing levels, we have had a reduction by .63 peoples from last, .63.
Peoples.
Peoples, and that was seen in the port, temporary laborers, since we are no longer overseeing the operations of the port, we had someone that came in on weekends to, to clean up and make sure that the events ran accordingly. And then above, you can see that I had a shift in, in personnel, organize, organization of the engineering department rearranged that, and I'll, you'll see those monies shift when we get into that. So Public Works Administration, 1.8 people, that's myself, and then my office coordinator, I am funded under Public Works Admin and then also under Transit.
Who's the, who's the 1.8, you or?
I'm the 1.8.
I just want to make that perfectly clear, for your honesty.
As you can see, we had some increase in personnel costs and then contractual down a little bit. The percentages are kind of, it's only $500 increase, so it looks a little bit juxtaposed. But road use tax funds about 72,000 of it and then 100,000 in general fund. Engineering, you can see there's a little bit of a change in the, the personnel cost at the 509,000 budgeted from the previous fiscal year to the 475. What accounts for that is we had a, we had a staff member retire, and we also had a shift in leadership of, of who was in charge, but also rehired for a position that was paid a little bit less. So engineering, they take care of designing all of the projects, and you can see the, the revenue source is charges for services. So the hours that they work, they build, we build back towards the projects that they work on, so any sort of sewer work, we build back towards the sewer projects, any sort of road work, we build, we build back towards that specific road project. Engineering handles right-of-way permits, any sort of design on projects that are city-related. Transit, this is, the, the revenue sources on transit, there's quite a few, most of it is funded by state and federal aid. The state and federal assistance accounts for 600,000 of the million dollars of, of funding, the rest is done by transit charges, and then some of the general fund, we have some general fund money go over there, and then we have some levy money as well. We have 11 employee, 11.63 employees in transit, of which point two is myself, and then we have, we have full-time drivers and part-time drivers. The, the budget has increased just a little bit, just about $8,000. The personnel costs have gone up, while some of the commodity pricing, which is gasoline and diesel fuel, have gone down, and then vehicle maintenance is one of our other big cost drivers, and that, we've seen a, a pretty good reduction in that over the last couple of years. I handed out a sheet to you guys that this kind of explains, the, the sheet's a little bit more detailed than I wanted to put on a, on a PowerPoint presentation. What I wanted to get across to on, on this department was the total amount of rides versus the operating costs, and then the, the local operations. Our rides hit its peak back in 2014 at 220,000, they've declined to, at the last fiscal year, 200,000. I didn't bring up current numbers, I don't have those numbers yet, we have to report to the state and the, the DOT there on those rides. But in the end, what those rides turn into, the rides and the miles turn into funding on the backend, so FTA or Federal Transit Administration and then the State Transit Administration, we get monies to operate, and as I just said before, accounts for about $600,000. The state funds come in on a monthly basis, and then the federal funds come in on a quarterly basis as we report our figures to them. So the good thing to note, I guess, out of this whole conversation is the local tax operations obligation has actually been reduced since, since it was back in like 2010, 11, 12, where we were in the $300,000 mark. Last couple of years, we're under 200,000, not by a whole lot, but so that's a pretty good decrease.
Because of the difference in the cost.
Commodity prices probably had a lot to do that, we also saw a lot of fairly, fairly good increase in ridership, which helps on the backend for federal funding two years later.
We re, in 2013, we renegotiated contracts for pay for transit operators, and that was a significant portion of the reduction from that 330,000 net cost level down to the 200,000 range. Now, we have since increased some of those positions back towards where they were previously, but we have also seen vehicle maintenance costs significantly lower than what they were previously, and if you were to go back and look at our fuel costs in that 2013 timeframe, we had a much higher fuel cost range at that point than we do now. Our ridership is, revenue from ridership has been significantly lower than it was four years ago, but if you look at the actual rides, even though our fees that we collect has gone down, we still have seen, we seem more stable on the rides than we have on the fees.
Yep, and one of the things that I've noticed as of this year is Medicaid changes have really affected the way that some of those individuals receive bus passes, it's a little more complicated now than it had been in the past.
No, I was, I was at the regional planning today and they were saying the same thing, so.
I do want to move you back two slides for a second, if you can go back up to engineering, one right there. Funding sources, even though it's not in Nick's budget, the sales tax, we, we do have a proposed for FY19, 58,000 of revenue for, we, we do bring over a portion of funds out of local option sales tax.
And you can see that in previous budgets.
It's been in the previous, and it looks like it's not in there for this upcoming year, but it is, it's 58,000 in there, and that is in open gov, if you were to look in there.
Can I make you the request, could you maybe email this to us?
Hard to read.
Hey, I can't, I can't read either one, bro.
I can't read it either, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm the senior one on this.
Well, and all I did, what I did was, your deep. Well, and all I did, what I did was, your detail sheets, you already have them. All I did was, I, I wanted to make it simple so I could just copy this and explain the top, the top sheets of each of the operating budgets.
The graphs would be very good, though, if ever, everyone could have that one.
I can forward those graphs.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yep. There we go. I thought I hit it. Uh, this is kind of a map of our operations for transit. It, it doesn't always function like this, I guess, because we run two or three stable route, not stable routes, that's not the right word. A lot of our routes are demand response, so if you call in, we'll pick you up at a corner and take you one to your location or get you on to another bus, uh, that will take you to your location, so.
Quick question on this, the, um, other revenue for operations. It's increased over the last four years and decreased this year. What, what's that revenue from?
That's advertising. So our buses have wraps on them.
All right, yep.
Uh, street maintenance, um, is funded by road use tax. We have thirteen point two employees funded out of that. Relatively low increase in the overall budget, um, two point six five percent in personnel, which is, which is dictated by the ASME contract. We, what the street department does is they take care of a hundred and sixty-seven lane miles worth of road in the city of Burlington. That includes patching, street sweeping, um, striping with paint. You name it with the street, they'll, they have to take care of it. Uh, snow removal is, is a, is an aspect of road use tax. It's funded out of that. As you see, there's no personnel there. That personnel, um, is composed of the operations part of things, the streets and sewer, um, employees. And we, uh, we budgeted for three hundred and twenty-three thousand. It's composed out of road use tax. So last year, we didn't use all of the road use tax funds for snow removal because we had a relatively light year. All that funding does is return back to the fund balance of road use tax. Just put a picture of the snow plows up there, nice and decorated up for the parade. And then I put up a map of our emergency route. Every year, we put out a pamphlet discussing kind of our snow removal operations and policies. You would have saw that in a leaflet in the Hawkeye, I think twice it went out. And then it's also on our website.
The plows, that was, uh, that was choice, my friend.
I thought so. Sewer maintenance, as I spoke before, eight point three employees with that. The way it works with streets and sewers operation, um, there are staff members that are funded out of either one or both of the, uh, of the funding sources. But it's the same group of employees, um, that's funded. So they do, you might do in street, you might be doing street work one day and then the next day you're going to be doing sewer work. So they're cross-trained, uh, to have a larger pool of employees. Um, and the funding sources, sewer fees, a million dollars. Uh, this is just a map of, this is in a currently unseparated part of town, um, showing the complex net, network. This is just a small in, zoomed-in picture of the complex, uh, network of collection system that we have in the city of Burlington. So this is some area that will be, I think that's Summer Street right here and that's Angular.
Is it a coincidence that that's the location where we just had that, uh...
I didn't mean to do that, but, uh, as you will note right there is where we have our issue that we're going to be taking care of here next week. Uh, property maintenance, uh, property maintenance is funded, um, by charges that we bill out to the other departments. Um, we currently bill out at sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents per hour, uh, to the other departments to do, um, property maintenance type functions, you know? HVAC system work, electrical work, um, you know, structural integrity type work. Uh, we have five, uh, five employees out of there. We have a part-time person that does some locating and another one that does some, uh, odd jobs. But the, the increase in this budget is two point five percent.
And that would be?
Uh, most of it is, I mean, the, the increase for contractual services is only two thousand dollars, so that percentage is thrown off by a lot. Um, the increase is the personnel costs that I would say is the bigger dollar figure. But it, it's, uh, from previous budgeted, it's about eleven thousand dollars of an increase, so. Percentage-wise, it's really not that much. Um, these are all the structures that they maintain. Uh, they do maintain some in the park. I didn't put all those on there because I'd have been there for days. But these are all the city-owned facilities, um, that they, uh, oversee some operations. The red ones I put as, uh, fire, blue is police, and the rest are yellow, just kind of a general city facilities.
How much time do they put into, uh, streetlights, et cetera?
Um, they do quite a bit, as you can see, if you get into the detailed budget, we have spent quite a bit of time replacing, um, streetlights, um, in recent years to LED conversions. They also do, uh, quite a bit of traffic light work. As Main Street was, has been kind of an issue in the last month. Uh, you've seen us down there, that street maintenance, uh, or the street lights and the traffic lights are all maintained by property maintenance.
So a good chunk of, they, they do bill out to a lot of the departments, but one of the primary areas they do is into the road use tax fund under the traffic signalization area, too.
Correct. Uh, vehicle maintenance operates very similarly to, to property maintenance. They bill out, uh, for their, for their work that they do for the different departments. Um, they bill out currently at ninety-five dollars an hour, um, and that includes, uh, vehicle work on small cars all the way up to our heavy equipment that we have. We do charge thirty-five dollars, uh, for an oil change. Um, and they have three full-time employees with a part-time, um, assistants. We have seen some increases in some vehicle maintenance charges. Uh, we've had some capital work that we've done, um, last year with the fu, fuel pumps. But I would say things are so much better run now with vehicle maintenance than they had been in the past. We have an excellent, uh, individual running this division who is very mindful of the way that they do purchasing and the way they schedule out work. Our predictive maintenance is so much better than it has been in the past, um, which helps cut down on catastrophic breakdowns on vehicles. So I would say that this is, this is one area that has made great improvement over the last year or two.
Sweet. Thanks for the heads up.
And actually, you see a reduction in costs, and some of that is from the commodities that they're purchasing. Um, they, they purchase all the gas and diesel fuel. Any questions on operating budgets? The one, I guess, budget that I haven't talked about or showed was the depot. Um, the depot's budget from two years ago has increased fairly significantly because of the work that we did with the great room renovation. Uh, we just, we have so much more space to maintain now. Um, we have over four thousand, forty-five hundred square foot of space, where in the past we had maybe two thousand. So we have so much more space to maintain.
Is how much of a, how much of an increase?
Um, I don't know, well, I do know, but I don't have it right in front of me. I think it's about fifteen or twenty thousand dollars worth of added expenditures.
Which line item is your LED lights for streetlights, too?
Uh, we have a capital line item that we use, uh, for LED conversion. So, for instance, we did Roosevelt, um, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year. And we, we had a capital line item for that. Uh, then for this fiscal year, we have Central Street, um, LED replacement. We also have an LED, we also have an energy efficiency capital line item for facilities. And that's all, that's also a capital item, so you won't see that in the operating.
Okay. Did we fix the thermostat issue down at the depot?
I believe so.
So what, is, Nick is talking about the...
It was too hot? Is it still too hot? Might check into that.
All right.
She said she was down there the other day and was still, it's, it's much hotter than I keep my house, so.
Granted, there's all those windows, you know, so the sun...
That does, that does calculate into some of the heating into that building. That those, all those exposed windows and the black floor really heat the place up.
Well, but, yeah, as long as you, as long as you're on it.
I will check the thermostat.
Yeah, as long as you're on it, because, yeah, address that, please.
So the budget down in the, the depot was thirty-six thousand for two thousand and seventeen. Our actual expenditures in two thousand and seventeen were sixty-two thousand. And that's what our proposed budget is for, for this next year. Now, some of those were inflated with, uh, property maintenance doing a lot of work, trying to get water out of the basement at that time. But, uh, now, the, the primary driver of the change for why we're at sixty-four thousand for operating costs versus the thirty-six thousand back then is the expanded space. Um, we have a, a larger area to heat and cool and we have a larger area to clean.
Ready for capital?
Yes, sir. Are you guys good?
Yep. I'm gonna do it for time.
You're fine.
Am I trucking through?
You're doing fine.
Um, it's capital improvement plan. I'll first talk about, uh, vehicles and equipment, some of the public works projects. If you can see in the capital, um, in the CIP, the full CIP, I have things listed under public works projects and also streets and sewers. Um, this is the full listing of the vehicles and equipment. I won't specifically talk about, um, a lot of the streets, um, equipment for fiscal year nineteen through twenty-three. Um, I can answer any questions on those if you want me to. There's a couple on the top that I want to, to talk about because they're a little bit more, um, specific. Um, the bus, uh, we, uh, have a replacement schedule for the, the buses that we use for transit department. Um, it's probably a little hard to see, but in the, in there, we have a description of the buses that we're trying to replace. These bu, these buses are highly contingent on, for replacement, based on the next slide here, which is the, it's the PTMS scoring that the DOT uses. I don't, honestly, I don't know what that acronym means. I just always refer to it as PTMS scoring. And so what that does is it, is it comes up with whether or not your buses will be federally funded for replacement. So as you can see here, um, our two thousand and one and two thousand and two buses, which are actually not the oldest two, we have a nineteen ninety-nine, are, are scheduled for replacement because they've met a threshold of a score. Um, so it takes age and mileage into consideration. And this is, this is throughout the state of Iowa. All the transit agencies' buses are listed on this scoring. And so I simply took Burlington's, um, scoring out and showed what this means. Um, and so based on that and based on what had been replaced in the past, we came up with the number of buses that we'd like to try and replace. So as you can see in federal, or in fiscal year nineteen, we have a grant funded to replace a light-duty bus. So we have light-duty buses and we have medium-duty buses. Light duties cost around a hundred thousand right now. Uh, medium duties are in the, in a higher bracket because they're a little bigger built. We have a hundred eighty-five thousand. I don't think it'll cost a hundred eighty-five thousand after the last medium duties that we just ordered. I don't know why that, that dollar figure is inflated from what I worked on with the, uh, the DOT, but I don't think it'll be the full hundred eighty-five. I'd like to keep it at a hundred eighty-five to be able to fund a bus in case those prices come in, uh, through procurement next year by the DOT a little bit.
Yeah, out of, if you look at those buses, it's two.
That's three.
No, no, two.
I don't know, that's valid, but all right, work it out, boys.
So out of those buses, uh, we hadn't replaced a bus from, what, two thousand and twelve through, um, this last year, two thousand and seventeen. Um, we finally get, we did get one in two thousand and seventeen. We have two this, this cycle. And as we move forward, I mean, he's got one in each year in there. Uh, all of, all but one are contingent on receiving federal funds. We have one in there, all our funds. Um, we, if we were to not be able to get federal funds to get some of those, we'd probably look to need to get at least one more in that cycle that's fully funded by us. Uh, so that's something to be thinking about, that if we'd, even without the federal, federal funds on this, we're probably be in a position where we maybe not hit that schedule there, but probably spend more money, uh, out of, out of some source to keep our fleet updated.
Do you expect us to have some scoring issues coming, upcoming, or is it just that?
If you look at this, these numbers, look.
The, the biggest problem is there, is our competition. A lot of the buses in the state of Iowa are the same issue, the age. And as you can see, we had quite a few buses replaced in the two thousand and nine, ten. Um, we, those were the Arwa, or the, they call them the Obama buses because that was when there was a big incentive package. We ordered five of them all at the same time. Well, the issues that we've seen so far is they were pretty cheaply made, just to get them out the door. And now we're paying for some of those cheaply made issues. And so our vehicle maintenance charges have been higher on those era of buses. And so as we are able to replace them, I think we'll see some savings in vehicle maintenance.
So now we're getting the Trump buses?
So as we, as we go through the process and are replacing, um, buses, um, that, uh, federal funds, we'll probably be doing those on the, the scores that are maybe in the negative category, uh, because we do have to work through those two thousand and nine era buses, before they go up the, the scoring criteria. And we, we do not look competitive, we're not competitive with, uh, like, the COGS, as they go and do their buses, they put an awful lot more miles on theirs for the same level of, of work than what we do. So they're able to get their buses replaced a lot sooner than ours. They score out better than we do with the way the formula is.
The, the, the regional planning, it's like C-Bus.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, C-Bus is a COGS, council of government.
Yeah. So they, they put on a lot of miles because they go from town to town. We do a, we do a lot of...
It's all in-town stuff.
From in-town to in-town, and we have a lot of idle time.
So this year, you're funding two, and is that a hundred percent federal dollars or is there any matching?
There, it is eighty-twenty.
Okay.
Eighty-five percent.
And then, and then next year, depending on scoring, or later on down the road, we may have to at some point fund one, two of our own, based off of scoring.
What cycle, what number years is that? Four or five? Five-year period that you're talking about?
So we, we do a five-year CIP plan. And as you look on what he's got there, we're getting federal funding on four of five buses purchased on a five-year basis. I, I kind of hesitate to think that we're actually going to receive federal funding on four or five buses.
I think we're optimistic saying that we're going to receive that funding.
So I think that...
But you don't see two? You don't see us getting two buses?
I think we probably get two, but receiving, receiving that many, especially when you consider the scoring and the negative numbers, you can't replace those because that means that there is, there's a timetable. Once it crosses that threshold into the positive, it means you've passed a certain amount of time to get rid of that bus. So when you're in the negative category, it's, although two thousand, or the, the twenty seventeen, there were no federal funds for that bus.
But when you hit the...
It's usually tied to a threshold because the federal funds have a timetable on them. You can't use them past their use, you have to get past their useful life before you're able to get rid of them, or replace them with a similar style.
Can you go back to that previous slide? So are we replacing three two thousand and nine vans over the next four years? Is that what I'm looking at?
Um, and so in fiscal year nineteen...
Chevy 'oh-nine' Chevy replacement, uh, twenty-one Chevy 'oh-nine' replacement, and twenty-two 'oh-nine' Ford replacement.
Correct. Yep. Three years, we're replacing three 'oh-nines'.
So we're doing three 'oh-nines' in the next...
And they're the, they're, they are our buses with the highest cost.
Correct.
Well, that, like you said, because they were cheap.
And sadly, the one that is a ninety-nine is probably one of our better, better running buses. And actually, this, this minivan is going bye-bye. It doesn't work, so it shouldn't be on there, but...
You're depressing me.
I know, sorry.
Come on, let's push forward.
All right, flood wall operations, let's move on.
Flood wall, all right.
Um, so the one other odd thing on there is the telehandler. Uh, it's not something we've had before. Um, previously in the last fiscal budget, uh, we had recently purchased some flatbed trailers, uh, for flood wall operations. And so I just wanted to talk about the, you know, we have an understanding of what we're going to do for flood wall operations. It's not that much of a monetary commitment, but I just wanted to explain kind of how we're going to do things. Um, so we first started off, uh, last year, trying to figure out our capital purchases, lining them up, uh, as we're getting into our flood wall. Uh, we went up to Davenport, they operate a flood wall. They actually use a different system than what we have, but it's very similar. Uh, it's aluminum columns and then aluminum planks. And so I took staff up there and talked about what's the best method of how we're going to operate our flood wall once it's installed. And so we purchased the flatbeds to store, um, all the pieces of equipment. Uh, but I have a telehandler on there, um, because we think, we're not going to, we didn't want to buy it right away because we didn't know, one, the size or the capabilities that we would need. There's some crab walk features that we would potentially like, uh, to use on them. But as you can see, kind of the function of the reason why, uh, the bottom left-hand is from the, the provider of the flood wall that we're going to have had an operation where they took a telehandler and they're using it like that. I would see us using it very similar to the way that they are using that.
Make things run a lot smoother, man.
Um, and so, jumping into the next slide, I know this isn't the budget, but I, I, I want there to be an understanding. We realize that we're going to have a flood wall relative to the river. It's going to be parallel with the river. And so we're going to not only do that section of flood wall preparation with the panels, but we're also going to have to continue to use HESCO barriers at the north and south end of the wall.
Right.
And so we had a HESCO representative come forward, uh, last week, and we met and talked about how we're going to do that. And I think a telehandler will... And I think a telehandler will come and use that as well. So just wanted to go over kind of what flood wall operations are moving forward.
And that's just until we're done with the flood wall, whatever year that gets done.
For the HESCOs, correct.
Right.
Um, also from a property maintenance or the public works budget item, um, for capital items, Roosevelt, or Roosevelt battery backup. We currently have a battery backup project planned this year. We did it in three-year cycles to get battery backups on all the traffic lights. Um, as you can see, the green, uh, dots were the intersections that we're handling this fiscal year. Um, for fiscal year nineteen, we are going to be handling, um, Mount Pleasant, uh, Division, and then West Avenue. And then for fiscal year twenty, we're trying to do the four intersections, basically the increase, um, Sunnyside, Kirkwood, um, Market, and then down at Mason. So what this will allow you to do, um, is operate full colored cycle for about six to eight hours. Um, currently, if we lose power in that area, everything's go off, and it causes potentially some traffic issues.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
This is a fairly sizable project, uh, the public works building roof, uh, that was kind of, we knew is anticipated, but we have some issues with some leaking, and we thought we could get away with it for a while. Um, but now it has moved where we have leaking over some major electrical, uh, and network type things. Get replaced. Um, the building was dedicated in two thousand and one. There's a ten-year warranty on the roof. Um, and we're at year seventeen, so.
That just seems like a lot of money for a roof.
It's a lot of flat work. There's a lot of square footage out there. So if, and if you didn't notice, this is a picture of our facility. So there's multiple different flat levels, but it's a lot of square footage out there.
And it's a rubber roof, so.
Yeah.
It's just more expensive in general. Uh, quick question on the, on the back, battery backup. Is there any assistance there on the state's part considering that's a portion of a highway?
Um, there probably is. We want, we thought it was important to get done, uh, relatively soon, um, just because we saw some issues with a line.
So are we losing the ability to take advantage of state money because we're doing it sooner, or?
Um, in all honesty, we'd probably get the third year funded, um, with, with another project that I have lined up. But for the amount of money it is, and to go through the federal process, it's probably just as easy to go through and pay for it ourselves. Um, I have the white boxing, uh, the former Greer's, uh, building on here. And you can, as you can see in the CIP, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year nineteen money. Um, I have it broken out into two different fiscal years, um, just because there's going to be some work that happens this year. Um, the fucking, uh, hit the wrong button. Uh, seventy-five thousand dollars was received from a challenge grant. We had put a hundred and twenty thousand dollars last fiscal year, um, from the Economic Development Fund over. Fifteen thousand of the one-twenty has been spent on a sewer lateral, uh, when we were doing the storm sewer project to try and save money on replacing, um, concrete, we used the same trench. So the total price that, or total value that we have now is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And the total amount over will be the two forty-five or two?
One forty-five for the next fiscal year, because most of the construction is likely to happen then.
But two sixty-five overall. Is that right?
No. One eight eighty.
Oh, okay.
The, the one forty-five is for fiscal year nineteen, probably thirty-five thousand for this fiscal year.
Alright.
Alright, we have more in the budget for that, but overall it'll be a hundred and eighty.
It'll be nice to see in that building rocking and rolling.
Hundred and ninety-five. We spent fifteen thousand of it already.
Correct.
That's not all just going, is that all just going to the Greer's space, or is any of that, or is that the depot?
There is some plans out of that to do the floor in the great room. So if you notice the flooring right now, it doesn't look the greatest. There is a spot in there where we had Royal Concrete come in and bring it to a higher standard.
I thought we were going to try, I thought we were going to try to do some more windows, too.
That, the Greer's work includes windows.
Okay.
Um, the real estate project I wanted to kind of bring up, um, somewhere where I see us moving forward. We have a lot of loops in town, which loops are underneath the pavement and help coordinate whether or not there's vehicles at that intersection. Um, at Division, the outside eastbound lane is disconnected, doesn't work. So what I would like to do with this project, there's a, there's a new way to do it. You have, essentially they're pucks, battery backed up, they're, they have a battery in them. And then you put a sensor, um, up on the, on the mast arm, and they're able to sense cars coming over top of them. And they're relatively cheap to do. Um, so we can do the whole intersection for nineteen thousand. Um, and it actually functions as a traffic counter as well. Um, I think about five years, and so to replace that puck is about two to three hundred dollars. This, so the biggest cost is the sensor on top of the mast arm.
Okay.
And then reprogramming the, the control box to, to read that.
But as they go bad, just three hundred bucks?
Yeah.
For the, okay, so the sensor.
For the puck.
Yeah.
But means that you do have to cut a hole into the concrete and put some stuff over top of it, but it's really totally minor. Um, the Fifth and Valley parking lot, we've discussed this in the past, but this is in fiscal year nineteen, six hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for. Uh, we have reached out to BNSF. We have a potential lease, um, coming our way to, to rent that from BNSF to put the parking lot on top of it.
Is that, on that parking lot, is that contingent on the, the project?
Yes.
So we're not going to do that unless the project comes through?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, Central Street Bridge improvements, um, there was some retaining walls, causing some concern, uh, for staff. And so we had Stanley consultants going and do a kind of an inspection and study on the, on what type of fixes we could do to help extend the life of Central Street Bridge. Um, they gave three different kind of categories, one to two-year, two to five, and then long-term fixes. Um, what I have before you is trying to take care of all the fixes at one time, get better costs. And a lot of the work that is being planned is abutment work and then retaining wall work. Um, and then a way to help shed the water off the bridge, um, in a better manner. That's led to a lot of our issues that you see on the bridge, is the way that it sheds water, um, has started to deteriorate. Some of the, some of the structures around it. Um, there, as I said before, there's concerns with structural integrity of the bridge. We're simply trying to preserve the lifespan of it.
This is one that we're looking to fund with TIF funds. You're going to be over, you're going to be right.
I know.
Um, so the process to go through and add, to do a project like this with TIF funds, we have adequate funding to make it work, um, there. But what we have to amend our, uh, urban renewal plan, or, I said, uh, to include this as a project to be funded with TIF funds. Uh, you'll see that, uh, as we move forward in the next couple of council meetings, setting a public hearing to do a plan amendment. We'll have to go through the process of having an, a, a meeting with the school and county to talk about, uh, proposed use of TIF funds, um, over the course of the next few, few meetings, too.
I'm alright with being proactive for maintenance.
Um, this project actually is scheduled for fiscal year twenty, but it's a sizable one in here in the, uh, public works section of the CIP. So this includes, it's a, it's an adaptive system, um, costing about one point two million dollars. It is eligible for a Iowa Clean Air Act funding, um, for this. And so as you see off to the right, what this would include is running fiber optics from Kirkwood up to Mount Pleasant and also Sunnyside. As you may notice, as you're driving, um, Kirkwood down to Mason are all connected, are all, uh, scheduled together. But as you get north up to Mount Pleasant, it is not connected with them. And so this system would include the whole corridor of lights on Roosevelt. But with the, with the current Agency Street project, we're also connecting, um, French Road and Big Lots, and also West Burlington Avenue. And we're also making improvements with a future project, um, at Columbi- at Columbus Drive. Um, and so this adaptive system would include that, that full T there, the full corridor of Roosevelt, but also the side streets or the side lights on Agency. Um, this would be using TIF as the match. So what we would need to do is we need to get, uh, an application in for this October to be able to get funded for fiscal year twenty, because it's a, it's a federal monies.
This, similar to the Central Street, and you know, number of times that interrupt is probably predicated on how you leave things out.
That was what the number counting was before, as we made an over-under bet on how many times he would interrupt my budget presentation. And I said it was more than six, and we're at five right now.
Uh, this is going to be one, uh, as, as we go through the, the public hearing, uh, to amend the TIF plan, the urban renewal plan, not only will we be adding Central, uh, Street Bridge Repair, we'll add the Roosevelt traffic signals. And you still have another one to talk or, or mention, that I can't remember which one it is. The roundabout, is that on next year's? No, there's another one on next year's budget. Um, well, I think there's another one for next year. Um, we, we need to, any project we're going to find with TIF financing, we have to put on the urban renewal plan. We, the ones that are in the current, in FY nineteen's and twenty's budgets, we'll do a plan amendment to get them noted now.
Okay.
Um, this one, even though he's showing it eighty-twenty with a one point two million project amount, it's going to take about two hundred and fifty thousand of the money. Anticipated. I, I'm putting a, a million dollar. I'm putting a million dollar placeholder in for ti- potential TIF usage on this. Uh, just in the off chance you don't get the federal funds, that we still have the ability to, to look at doing the whole project ourselves and, and have a cost estimate that is number in the urban renewal plan that's fairly close to what the overall project, project might be.
Appreciate that, but I don't like it when you talk like that, but I appreciate that.
What part?
The million dollar.
Give me a minute, let me think about that.
And here's, I've got a lot of questions regarding that project, and maybe now's not the time to ask them. But, um, I mean, what are the overall benefits going to be? I mean, I understand traffic flows will be better, get the million dollars on better traffic flow.
The side street traffic flow?
I mean, it's, it's not terrible right now. I mean, it could be improved, but that's a lot of money to spend to be able to reduce the amount of time that somebody spends in traffic by a minute or two. I mean, i- I mean, is there something out there to show us?
Why this came up in the first place is I, the, the Highway sixty-one commissioner coalition is, I think that's what the coalition, uh, talked about the lifespan of Highway sixty-one and what that means, and how long, you know, what's the traffic count numbers before? They have to think about doing something, you know, bypassing the road. And this adaptive system was brought up. Engineering firm that was working with the Iowa DOT on the study of this corridor. And so this adaptive system could give us some few extra years on the lifespan of, of Highway sixty-one.
As they, as they look at.
To go around Burlington.
Well, they have a couple of different options. They either have, there either has to be an additional lane put on. Uh, both ways, there's not much room in that corridor. You're going to be impacting a lot of businesses through there. Uh, or you're looking at a bypass. I mean, those are really the two main options. And this is one of the key things that helps to extend the, the period of time before that has to be, come into play as something that DOT is pushing us to do.
So when they say we do, do they give you a year?
Close to that threshold now, but it's trying to be anticipatory and get off the, the kirtails of the study that.
They're looking in the ten to twenty-year timeframe on, when they're talking about that.
And that's with this program, with us, with us making this improvement.
No, I think that extends it beyond that. They were putting us in the ten to twenty-year timeframe to have, have a required change. That was anticipation just based on the, the increase in traffic flow through there. Uh, this helps to extend it hopefully beyond that ten to twenty, but they don't really, we haven't seen anything that puts a number on what that is.
They're currently at like twenty-four thousand a, average daily traffic flow through the Roosevelt corridor. I think before they would ever do more, well, into the thirty thousand average daily traffic load. So just, go ahead.
Good, no, go ahead. I'm waiting.
I was going to say, you'd have to see a fairly sizable increase on that traffic flow. And if there's any way we could get that so that it's improved, because currently our, our current setup, Mount Pleasant and Sunnyside are just going to have to stay at that. So that, that thing helps log down traffic as it slows through town.
The, uh, then this is probably before you got here, but at one point in time, when they did the extension of the, the left turn lanes, you know, where the center turn lanes, they were talking about putting right turn lanes in as well to kind of help alleviate that traffic. Is there any discussion about that?
I don't, I don't think there was in the coalition.
That, in anything the DOT has presented, that, that hasn't been shown.
Okay.
Whether they've looked at it, that hasn't been what they've presented.
I think I remember seeing it like ten years ago, so my memory serves, but I don't know.
And Snyder and Associates who helped, who did the plan for the DOT and helped project this number for us, a ninety-ten percent match. I didn't put that in the budget because I didn't think that we could probably get that. But because they're currently talking about this, they think that the DOT would be excited to throw in, you know, an extra ten percent of funding for this. So I think we could probably get that, but I didn't want to show that from a budget standpoint.
Yeah, I mean.
Just because it's eligible for.
That's right, we ain't got to talk too much about that. Hey, but before, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say, and that's, that's true, because the return is much better for us. But to start talking about, you know, seven-figure numbers, um, to improve traffic flow, when, I mean, I think that's something that can probably be done later on down the road in order to try and, uh, increase that lifespan and maybe not take. Discussing, so, uh, but assuming that grant comes through, then, then that's a big, a lot more, a lot different conversation.
I thought, uh, now maybe I'm thinking of something else that you can be brief, uh, but I thought there was something about incompatibility in parts or something, or with the, uh, with the new system that's going on, state is running. I thought that had something to do with these, uh, uh, things.
I know we had some bad cameras on our mast arms for a while, but they've been replaced.
Some of the stuff, uh, I think for, like, Agency Street, getting, uh, the streetlights on those to sync up with the Roosevelt, there, there are some issues with how, how it currently was set up. Now, it's going to be better with the improvements for, uh, some of the stations that use, to go to this adaptive system. And I think it helps to alleviate some of those problems.
To explain an adaptive system, it, it calculates and sees the traffic flow from its different corridors. And if it, if, so if there's no traffic flow on Roosevelt, it'll shift more time to the side streets. It'll open it up to get traffic moving on there. I mean, it's, it's a pretty scientific program, but.
Give him your good side, Nick.
Oh, he's taking my backseat of the butt? Alright. Um, I'm moving on to the street and sewer department in the CIP. Locus separation specifically, five point three-five million dollars. Um, as you can see over here, I have the MASL basin of which, this is the locus basin. Um, I have what sewer separation is off to the left. Um, so currently we have our storm sewer and sanitary sewer running at the same time. Um, when, when events happen, uh, it discharges out into the river. So there is water that is not desirable to be there, and so the DOT, or the, DOT, talking about too much DOT. The EPA and the DNR have, uh, consent ordered us to separate. Um, as you can see here, I just wanted to blow up some maps. Uh, this is the current pipe network, um, in the locus, and you can see the magnitude of the rest of the basin and the reason why. We, we've talked about some of the dollars, we've talked about in separation costs. Uh, this is the proposed new, uh, sanit- well, this is the current setup of which we're going to try and use, uh, some of the same system. Um, this is the proposed, and then this is, uh, the new storm network that would be installed with that. Um, so the funding source behind that is our sewer, uh, is SRF loans backed by, uh, the sewer revenue that we receive from your, from your water bill. And I would say that this is a majority of the reason why you see that three percent increase. You know, we talked about that when, uh, the separation is the driving force behind the increases that we have seen and will continue to see until this work is taken care of.
In twenty sixteen.
Hopefully. Hopefully we can get it extended then, because we can try and reduce the amount of projects over that timeframe. Sewer master plan, I didn't put anything on, there's only the, I did put on there. Um, sewer master plan is a, is two hundred thousand dollars in this current, in the fiscal year nineteen budget. It's a four hundred thousand dollar expenditure, um, to study and understand, uh, our sewer network for future demand needs, um, limitations on what we have for the system. Um, and kind of a list of how and where we should start spending money on fixing. of a list of how and where we should start spending money on fixing our current system that is already separated, um, and, and the things that we can do to try and help extend the life of our sewer network. So, if there's any questions on that, I can ask that, but I didn't really have anything other than kind of what we've talked about in the past. Recal plan, uh, we're, we're surfacing reconstruction rehab line item and then seal coat. I have a five-year road plan that I gave out to you guys. We'll talk about, a little bit about that. Uh, Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay, uh, the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, and then the Agency Street construction. Um, so this is the five-year road plan that we passed in October, um, of which I, but in your packets, I gave you the full five-year road plan. Um, I just wanted to highlight fiscal year nineteen and talk about a little bit of what those projects entail. Um, Flint Hills Drive from, uh, Division to Agency, well, it turns into Shields, but that whole stretch there is going to ha- get an overlay. Uh, it's a pretty rough shape. There's a couple of, uh, offices, uh, that'll be asphalt overlaid. And then, uh, Dillon Aspen, our concrete streets, um, sometime around the re, their era of being construction, constructed, they weren't constructed very well, or that lifespan has run out. And so, we need to redo the, those concrete streets, and that is a, a project that we're going to try and get done this year. Um, you can see that the other project, I won't go into the conversation, but it's one point four million dollars worth of spending, uh, this current fiscal year nineteen budget, um, and then fiscal year, uh, twenty, twenty, I think goes to one point five. Nope, it's one point four, and then fiscal year twenty-one is twenty, or is one point six million, and then one point five million after that. Uh, general obligation, uh, is the funding source for that. Um, sometimes when you can mix in road use tax, I think you do that as well, but I don't, I don't know that for sure. Um, the seal coat is a, is another part. Uh, we have four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, budgeted for fiscal year nineteen. I think we had a conversation, uh, earlier this last summer, and we talked about seal coat and why and where we're going to do it. We had a, a seven-year cycle that is actually taking eight years to replace because of funding. Um, it's hard to see on this map because of the, the coloring, but this is the remaining, um, sections of seal coat that we will try and get accomplished this fi- fiscal year. Um, fiscal year twenty, there is no money allocated out for seal coat. Uh, we think there's some, there's our seal coat that are not so great shape with our sewer separation work in Locust, so some of that will be taken care of by, by the separation work. We still have some other seal coats that are in the outlying areas that may not get touched for a while, but we want to kind of see how the, the sewer separation work will shake out, um, and how that means for road repair to, 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 and the next year go in and replace the sewer and tear all that road back down.
Amen, yeah.
So, but if we're extending it out forty, fifty years for sewer separation, knock on wood, we would go in there and replace the road. Um, Mount Pleasant Street, uh, HMA, uh, we currently have, are in check plans, final plans with the DOT. Uh, some project, about a million dollars from the DOT. Um, West Burlington has a share because it goes all the way up to here. It's, it's Roosevelt, it's all, all the way out to here. Um, I have in the bottom corner here, a cross section of the way that that lane configuration is going to work. Uh, similar to the way that Madison Ninth Street was applied, we applied for this street four years ago, for funding, and had the road diet applied to it going from the four-lane road that it is now to a three-lane road. Oops, I'm sorry. Give me a button, I'll start hitting it. So, it'll, it'll switch from four-lane road to a three-lane road with a center turn lane throughout it, and then bike lanes will be on the sides from that stretch. Doing some, uh, intake work on the sides. Otherwise, it's an HMA project.
I think it's gonna turn out pretty good.
Yeah, I, I like it.
Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, uh, has been kind of a topic of as of late. It's a five-point-three million-dollar project, million dollars in federal aid to replace it. Um, we are, we'll see stuff on the, uh, in the, in the, in the place. We're probably at a May letting now because of some issues with negotiations with BNSF, so. We'll anticipate that to start later in the year. Uh, it'll probably take about a year long to complete. Agency Street Reconstruction, um, we are kind, I have five hundred thousand, we have five hundred thousand dollars in there for the west part, which is mostly available. We'll have some work that'll carry over into the spring, maybe summer, so we put that in there to take care of any of the fiscal year transitions. Um, that project was funded by RISE, TSIP, which is Traffic Safety Improvement money, and then West Burlington also kicked in some funds.
We also have some TIF funds in there.
So, what is left on the Agency Street section west of Roosevelt, as you can see, some of the mast arms have gone up on the one side. The other two are going to be delayed until the power lines are lifted up and out of the way. Um, but the intersections are the other, the last big remaining part of that project. And so, those intersections, as you can see, there's some asphalt that's left, and that's, asphalt, and then reconstruct those intersections. Um, hopefully, when we start the Agency East project, we can get those traffic pattern, or those traffic things coordinated correctly. Um, the east section is from Roosevelt all the way to, I don't know what the road is, just past the Hy-Vee gas station. I hate to use that as a reference for the road, but it'll be back there. They will widen it, um, similar to the way that it was widened in the other areas on the east, or the west side of Agency. We'll have a center turn lane throughout of it, and then it'll taper back as it goes out of there. There are some major improvements going on to the intersection. We'll have new lights up, um, sidewalk on the north half all the way through. There's already sidewalk on the south half. Um, but, well, I think we're doing a little bit of, we're doing a turn lane here, so you can go right and left off Columbus, so you actually shift it to the work, to the west, so you can get that stuff over on the east. Um, and that's, that's a TIF and TSIP. Uh, the TSIP is about, I think it's a half million dollars for that. The rest is funded by TIF.
We've already borrowed that. That was borrowing, uh, last spring, uh, last spring to cover the roundabout, the west side of Agency Street and the east side of Agency Street, our matches on.
Uh, this is a future project, but this is also something that we've talked about recently, Broadway's, Broadway Street Extension. I have the parking lot on there, but that's not the project. I just use the same, uh, it's about a one-point-four million-dollar estimate. Uh, there is some parking planned on the west side. Uh, is, is a RISE grant o- opportunity, a fifty-fifty match for that speculative, uh, type grant. So, seven hundred thousand dollars from TIF, of which we would.
And that is the third project that we are.
That's the third project.
That will be included in the plan, plan.
Uh, Washington Street is a project that had been planned out. We'd applied, this is, I think this is STP, which I don't know what that is. They, the DOT changes their acronyms about every five years, so right now you would apply for STBG, then it was STP. So, it is, it was an eighty-twenty match. We had at one, uh, that, that project called for was an asphalt overlay. I think we're in, I'm concerned about that much money being able to cover some of the work that we're going to get into to make things ADA compliant. Um, there's a step, um, from the curb line up, and we're not going to be able to get away with that because it is federally funded. We're gonna have to make things as, as able to be compliant as possible. That means we may be getting to some, some concrete work that was not anticipated in that estimate.
We would have to get into some concrete work.
We are.
And that, that goes, that goes how far? It goes.
That is from front all the way to the bridge deck at Central.
This is a project that we're looking to use TIF funding to do our match. Uh, it's far enough that we can, in, in, this, over the next few meetings, but it is one that we are looking at, at our match there. And it, we do have the flexibility there to look at a little bit higher dollar match than what is in the original application.
What year is that?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Or twenty-two.
To get that kind of work done, though.
Twenty-one.
And the, the extra, you know, if we've got the money, the extra money that we're gonna spend, I can imagine getting into, yeah, that's.
The other side note with this street improvement, um, is we were, when we were doing the storm water planning, uh, with the EPA, we were also awarded the opportunity to be a Green America's Community, um, to look at some corridors within your city to help green them up by either bringing, um, medians that have the ability to have some planters in them, or, um, bio swales, I, that's not, not the right word for that, some, some detention.
Right, right.
And so, Washington Street and Main Street were two of the streets we, uh, to be at as that opportunity. They have been slower than I think anticipated, but that planning effort should kick off sometime this spring. And so, as we get into the design of this project, we may come forward with an idea or a, a plan for this street project that will increase the cost of that. Should you want to do that at that time, it would, it would.
Would, and one of the things to think about with that, these are the kind of, doing those greening projects like that, uh, has the added value as we're going to the DNR asking for an extension to our timeframe. There, it helps us to, to hat, to do that because that is part of, part of the issue that causes problems, the amount of surface water that is, 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 uh, project for us that we're doing to help alleviate the water that ends up getting into the system and causes us the problems that we have with the CISOs.
Are we still moving forward, are we still moving forward, uh, next year for the, for the, over, over by Grimes? Is it Grimes School?
Yes.
Yes, that's on, that's on that docket, that. And as we move forward with sewer separation, however that moves forward, we do have the ability to sponsor projects for a percentage of the loans that we take out for that separation.
We want to look into that, yeah.
And we can, we can make the argument that those monies could be applied towards a potential project like this, especially if it's identified now.
I love it, green it up, baby, green it up. I'm for it, man.
Peanut butter's ant about the grain.
Yeah.
I don't know if that came out right. Double clicked it. The last thing on there is a project that is scheduled out in federal year, or not federal year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, I believe.
Yep.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Um, is a roundabout budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars at the intersection of Division and West Burlington Avenue. The one at West Avenue with, they had a, we had a slip lane on that one, um, so there was a significant more concrete involved on that one. Uh, we, we reduced that out and tried to project that on here. Forgive my rudimentary drawing that I used on our.
It's very rudimentary.
Yeah, I know. Um, so what that, this project would entail is shifting, actually, to, uh, right away from Case Buying Credit Union.
Yeah.
Um, when we, when staff looked at this project, we first one, looked at what, what would streetlights do and what would they cost at this intersection, because the lifespan for stop signs at this intersection is coming to the end of its useful life, especially during heavy, um, heavy times. There is, uh, there's a lot of traffic that's in the intersection, being pretty well slowed down.
People have forgot how to use the four-way stops.
They have. Uh, the roundabout, I would say is, has been pretty successful. Um, we've had one reported accident to us, uh, of vehicles, and I would say the traffic flow is actually part of the problem that you see at that intersection. As they're getting through that intersection quicker, they're now, right now, running, and so, as that traffic flow increases, I think you're going to need to see some improvements. And we haven't done any further plans other than saying that we think that a roundabout would make a good addition to this intersection. And that was it.
That was a wonderful presentation, Nick.
Oh, please email that.
Yep, I will.
Point guard.
You have had, uh, for, every department has presented. You have some, uh, different side presentations that still need to go on, a couple of requests for funds out of the, um, Hotel Milltoth Fund will be done on Monday night. Uh, Mayor here will be, uh, the, the, their operating budget and, and, uh, the projects that they're working on on Monday night as well.
Correct.
Um, I don't, other than that, you know, the, we've, we've hit on what, what we have for a proposed budget. Um, we're maintaining existing, we're looking at maintaining existing staff levels, uh, solid waste, or, with the pickup, adding one full-time position there. Um, maintaining our existing property tax levy. That's what's being presented to you. You've had a, of, the CIP plan, everyone's gone through the project that's been on their list, uh, there. Um, I mean, you, technically, you could accept what's been presented and move forward with it, but this is the spot as you move forward. Monday night, uh, we have some time on, on the work session, uh, a placeholder for budget discussions after those final presentations. Um, if you want to have some discussions about, or questions about, that you, that you need further information on, that's really going to be the time to be kicking into that. And you don't have a significant amount of time beyond that. We need an, uh, finalized, uh, budget by February ninth. So, it's about two.
So, Monday, uh, plan on coming in Monday with your work boots, and we'll see what we can, after we get done with, with business, we'll see if we can.
Crank out.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Jim, is there, is there anybody that presents to us from a, from a development standpoint, or, or just a growth standpoint, of different policies that we can, that affect budget, we can look at, in order to encourage growth? Is there anything?
The closest.
Does the chamber come and give a, a state of the economy on, and how the budget affects are some of the things that we do?
No. Uh, the closest you have to what you're asking would be what happens through the planning department. Uh, the planning department had, uh, what they wanted to look at for the upcoming year.
Right.
Now, what they've done is taken a look at the community builder, comprehensive plan that was done back in two thousand and twelve. Uh, they go through that every year and take a look at how are we doing for hitting the, the identified goals that are in there? What are we going to, um, what are some shortfalls that are in there? What are some things that we think that we can focus on this year out of that plan to, uh, try to meet the, our, what our future priorities were? And they bring the, what, they're, based off of their thoughts off of that, that's what they come to the council and, and say, based off what the community back in two thousand and twelve, the, what, what, twenty years down the road, these are the steps we think should be focused on for this next year. That's really the biggest spot that you'll see, that, that you see that in. Um, from a economic development pers- perspective, um, you have, um, probably the biggest thing that's come forward has been the chamber, uh, making the presentation and, and, uh, and McCamber Avenue. Um, getting that, getting that done was something that they saw for, uh.
I don't know, this guy sleeps at night.
They saw for helping to be able to, you, do some of the final development within the existing business park. Um, and that's something where they, uh, some, uh, I don't know that they have a tremendous amount that they're looking for, um, for major plans to, to see the city work on.
I, I mean, I know they, they've come to us for, for specific, uh, projects, but I, I mean, if possible, I'd like to see if they'd like to come and give some level of comprehensive review, if they think it's possible to affect this project.
Something that would like, from the city side too. Uh, we've, uh, chose not to participate in a five-year, uh, plan for economic development, the last go-around. I think they'd like to see us be a partner in that as we move forward into the future.
Would it be worth it to see if they'd be interested in just coming and giving something out Monday?
Yeah, I don't know about Monday, but, um.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
The items that they specifically have for this budget cycle, they have presented, but.
Correct.
I, I think it makes sense for what you're saying as we move forward into the future, how do we look at, at, uh, building that in? I mean, you're looking to have a goal-setting session in March.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to have some of their thoughts from, 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 uh, background.
Point guard.
And that's all I had for tonight.
Okay, all right then. Um, you guys, we can, uh, mold this over, sip on it, nibble on it, uh, do what you do, and then let's, uh, let's come prepared to work on Monday.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, thanks everybody, good night.